This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call it order. The City Assets Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, the date is December 21st, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM. And we do have a quorum present in the room. We may have one commissioner that may join by the teleconference at least. So we've got a couple of items of community interest we'll bring to everybody's attention today. The City of Hassett's offices in the public library are going to be closed on Friday, December 24th, and Monday, December 27th, and then again on Friday, December 31st. And then if you have an interest in getting your name on the ballot for the May election, the first day that you can place your name on that ballot is January 19th, it's Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. The positions that are eligible for participation in the election are council member place one, council member place three, and council member place five. And those items are those positions will all be on the ballot. Hey, moving on, agenda item 3A, we have for review and considering approval, the November 16th, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion when you approve the minutes as written.
There's a motion to approve as written. Is there a second?
Second, Paul Wallach. Paul Wallach, second.
Okay, there's motion to approve and a second by Mr. Wallach. All in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on, agenda item 4A, discuss, consider, and act regarding the approval of the Gaddy addition final development plat located at 800 Blue Mound Road East. And is there a city staff report that we can review?
Yes, there is. Chairman Kadish and members of the commission, this is an 8.5 acre tract of land located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Hassett's. Therefore, there is no zoning on the property. However, the city extends their subdivision rules and regulations. The applicants of this particular piece of property are intending on putting an RV park and a storage facility on this location. And we've been working with them for several months to get everything that was needed as far as the plat was concerned. There's a significant amount of right of way that's being dedicated in the front of Blue Mound Road. And there's some other items that we work with as far as, you know, water and tour for this area. If you have any questions about the engineering of it, Mike Anderson is on the list of participants offline.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present this evening? Are you the applicant? Is there anything else you would like to add to the city staff report? Okay, all right. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item 4A? And if you have joined by teleconference, if you'll put your name or raise your hand or put a message in the chat field, then we can call on you and give you an opportunity to speak. Anybody's name? Give it a minute. Hey, recognizing no one stepped forward in the room or raised their hand on the teleconference, we will close the public hearing and we'll move to discussion. Any questions for the city staff or the applicant?
So I don't think we ever saw the preliminary plat.
That would be correct. This is a one lot development plat. So it comes in as a final. If it was like the second item that's on your agenda is in many lots, and it will be a preliminary plat. But this is a one lot development plat subdivision.
How was the contribution amount, $107,000? How was that determined?
Okay, that was determined by taking the total cost of the facilities and Mike Anderson might be able to address it more easily and come offline, but and then dividing it by the linear footage.
The frontage on the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that if you'd like. This is Mike Anderson, Belchup and Associates, the city engineer for the city. If you'll recall, the project across the street, Sweetgrass, they went through and designed Blue Mound Road, half of the design section of Blue Mound Road, including drainage and sidewalks. They designed that for the length of their frontage. We, in lieu of them building that, the city was able to get them to contribute roughly $660,000, I believe it was, to the city as an overall project. And it was agreed that because those plans were developed and that price was secured via bidding from the developer that at this project, the Gaddy addition, as well as the agenda item that's to follow, agreed that that was a reasonable method for determining the per-footage costs for Blue Mound Road. So in lieu of them going through and designing Blue Mound Road and us reviewing it and then bidding it and building it, everyone agreed that this per foot cost of, I believe it was $330 some odd dollars per foot, would be applied along their frontage. So you'll see this project has, let me go to the plat here, so don't misspeak. You're with me. So they have 311 feet of frontage adjacent to Blue Mound Road. So we took the per foot cost established via the Sweetgrass bid from across the street and applied those to this development. So they've agreed that that was a reasonable, fair, and equitable manner for determining cost participation and have agreed to contribute said costs towards the overall construction of reconstruction of Blue Mound Road, which will be undertaken by the city. And so what we'll do is, as this moves forward, towards the city council, we'll prepare a community facilities agreement that will memorialize all of the public facilities associated with this project, which would really just be their connection to the water system and then their cost contribution to the road. And there was a question earlier about the preliminary plat, and Mr. Swankie spoke to this. Typically, what we do is whenever there's going to be extensive public facilities that need to be constructed, i.e. public roads, public water and/or public sewer, we walk the folks through a preliminary plat so that those things can be laid out and costed in a schematic manner prior to going to final design. As Mr. Swankie alluded to, this is a single lot development that has access to an existing public street and is proposing a connection to the water system. And therefore, we determine that they could skip straight to a final plat since there were no real public facilities that needed to be laid out in a preliminary fashion, if that makes sense.
So I understand they're going to initially develop the plat with the use of a septic system or a holding tank. Is there any provisions for future connection to the sewer lines?
I believe when we looked at the possibility of an extension of the Sweetgrass sewer, just based on a cursory look, topography wise, this property could be served by that extension. But the applicant has basically told us that, you know, there's a small manager's office there that has a toilet and a sink. And other than that, there's no other sanitary sewer being generated for the project. So if there were possible additional subdivision of this property in the future, you could potentially sewer it via an extension from the Sweetgrass development. But given the loads proposed by the applicant, there was no further investigation into the extension of sewer service to the site.
So what was the purpose of using a 12-inch water line versus the eight?
The city currently has a 12-inch water main that traverses Blue Mound Road. And you can kind of see the triangle that's up on your screen where the elevated tank side is off Harmon Road. And then we've got a 12-inch line that heads south down Harmon Road and cuts cross-country, basically from where the hand is on the screen, back to the west and down through the Hugh White subdivision. And looking at the overall needs of the city system, we did two things. So we looked at the needed necessary fire flow from the hydrants to provide protection to this project as well as the adjacent project that we'll discuss on the next agenda item. And it was determined that their needs could be met with an eight-inch line because that facility would be connected on both ends by a 12-inch. And speaking with Public Works, it was determined that oversizing that line to 12-inch would be of great benefit to the system and would give David and his guys the ability to wheel water around in the event that they had a break or issue with a water line on either Blue Mound or that cross-country line. So the project could be served with an eight because it's fed in two directions from a 12. But from a hydraulic standpoint, in our review of the city's master plan, we recommended that that facility be upsized. So the plan would be for the developer to pay for an eight, and then the city would cost participate to get that facility to a 12-inch.
Thank you. I was just trying to understand if maybe there was some anticipated use of water on the site that require a larger supply line for that?
No, sir. It was an oversizing for the benefit of the system. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a clarification. You said RV park. You meant storage, correct? So you're saying RV park, are they going to actually live up there?
They're going to store their RVs there. They're not going to live.
There's no other questions. Is there a motion?
Well, wait a minute. I guess, Mike, I sent you a question about the, they had indicated within a year that they would agree to be annexed into the city. Is that right?
This project, it's my understanding, there was an annexation agreement that was put together by the city, the applicant, and the city attorney back in July of this year. I'm not terribly familiar with the terms of that agreement. It was basically a deferred annexation agreement. The request from the applicant at this point is to postpone the connection to the system until that line is put in with the adjacent development. So the one-year request is for a one-year deferred connection to the system. The terms of the of the annexation of the property into the city, I don't know if that's one year, if that's if they're going to want a deal similar to what Mr. Schombacher has proposed on his property adjacent. I would imagine it's probably greater than a year because Mr. Gaddis alluded to the possibility that, you know, he may look at the possibility of further subdividing this property in the future. He's kind of waiting to see how his current business fares there and try to figure out what makes sense from a, do I build more of this or do I look at doing this? So the terms of the deferred agreement, I don't have those right on hand with me. But I know that the request at this point is to defer the connection because if they were to connect right now, we would be faced with, they would have to go across Blue Mound Road to get onto the water line, which then creates another issue for us in the design of the reconstruction of Blue Mound Road. So what we're trying to do is coordinate the installation of the water line adjacent to them and have them tie onto that line. So we only have one crossing to deal with and not two. Your question to me about tying, I guess, the annexation of the property into our approval, I think it might be it might be more appropriate for us to get the deal points together with the applicant and bring those forward to the council. That's what we're proposing to do with the adjacent development. But I don't, those aren't, those aren't ready at this point. I know that's a long way to say not a whole lot, but it's kind of a, this is kind of a unique project. You know, they started the project in the county, just started going with the understanding from prior city staff that no approvals were required on the project because they were in the ETJ. And so we're trying to make the best of it at this point. I don't know if that helps or hurts or answers your question or raises more questions.
Yeah, I'd like to interrupt at this point. The mayor, who has been heavily involved in the negotiations, is sitting right here at the table and he probably details a little bit better. Thanks.
To answer your question about annexing, if they get hurting, and Mr. Gaddy, I thought to go or six months ago, and I posed this, there's advantages both for the city and for the developer. For the city, now, Mr. Gaddy, as well as the next app, will be, can do their project in the county and just meet our subdivision board and go on about their business, saying, but offering them or showing them what benefits of the city, but third base was advantageous to them. It's advantageous to us, something to the city, something to the city, it'll be zoned, as per our ordinance, annexation, automatic zone, if that's called. Now, the deal points are such that you, this developer can finish your development, as if you will be in the county. And that way, it does not require building from the city of Hassett's. Doesn't require all the building. Now, they are still stuck to 2015, yes, they are, that's the big mistake. But also is when they connect to the water line, particularly for the firewall, that impact is very for people. You're in the city limit. It's not, because that's an intermediate firewall use that never, most people don't. But there is a big burden for people in the county that need firewall. And our ordinance states that there is a water line within 1,500 feet of your wire. So let alone the impact that's associated. There is a requirement that a fire flow meter per, any water they use off that fire line, it'll be measured. So the advantage for the developer is to avoid those costs. Advantage for the city, it comes into the city, it's so. A builder development, he rents his first place, that establishes huge unlawful. When you annex a property into the city's corporate limit, there's business happening before he say, oh, you cannot change that. You have to allow that business to keep. Now, let's say Mr. Gaddy could sell his development, restore the storage, and someone else buys it, goes to one, I want to tear this down and put up another fire crack. It's in our city. That's all right. So this is for the long term, looking at your set for the city, get it into the city. But both developers or Mr. Gaddy is, at the very beginning, he is very much wants to be the corporate.
So do, so the plat approval tonight? Should the final agreement to be annexed into the city be tied somehow to this plat? Even a letter of intent or anything? Is there something in writing?
No, you're just approving the plat. This is characteristic what's played out. The deal for an annexation, developer agreement, that's what it will require. That proposal goes before the city.
All right.
So it's a multi-step process.
I have a quick question. When they, you said it automatically becomes agricultural. Would there be a zoning change?
No.
It'll stay agricultural?
Yeah.
Unless the land's sold?
It will stay agricultural. No thing. But he's allowed because it's established use. State law forbids a municipality from disallowing that established use. So that protects his right.
Okay, I guess as our city, though, would we change the zoning so that it conforms to that? Or would it just stay?
The advantage to the city to keep it agricultural. That way, you're open to, it would be, let's say this, let's say the city were to change it to industrial, and it don't need to, but if you change it to industrial, and it gets sold, and then you decide, well, you know, you got all these cows, it'd be nice to have housing built that up here, be just kind of blend in with it. You're going to have a hard time changing zoning to industrial. So if you keep it agricultural, the world is open to the city. They have, the city will have many choices.
It also has the most restricted use for the land as well. Under agriculture, it has the most restricted uses as well. Okay, any other? Correct. Any other questions?
He's mentioned anything, there's no zoning, those things.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, recommend the city council the approval of the Gaddy additional final development plat.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Post in the second. All in favor? And Mr. Hillborne still is not online. Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to agenda item 4B, discuss, consider, and act regarding approval of a preliminary plat for lots 1 through 4, Block A, and lots 1 through 4, Block B, Mr. Ridge Commercial, located at 800 Blue Mound Road East. We'll begin with our staff presentation.
Yeah, Chairman Kadish and members of the commission, this property actually wraps around the other property on the east and on the south side, as you can see on the exhibit on the screen. And at one time, the previous property was part of this, but they were separated a while back. They are intending and doing commercial lots on this. And therefore, it's a preliminary plat because they want to do multiple of lots. And so they had to provide a preliminary instead of going right straight to a final. And it has a street that they're proposing that goes right down the middle of it that services all the lots. And they, once again, it'll be a commercial development in the ETJ. No, sir.
Hey, is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, this is Scott Schombacher.
Mr. Schombacher, is there any additional information you would like to share with the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening?
Just to correct the lot count, it's, and it's stated in a couple places correctly, but it's lots 1 through 7 and lots 1 through 4. So there's a total of 11 commercial lots.
Okay.
That's it. Unless there's some questions?
Is there anything that we need to change administratively based on that clarification?
No.
Okay. Okay, any additional information you want to share, Mr. Schombacher?
I'll just answer any questions if the council has any.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item 4B? If you are online with the teleconference, you would put a message in the chat field and we'll be able to recognize you. Hey, recognizing no one stepped forward in the room or put their name in the chat field, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move to discussion. Any questions for the city staff or the applicant regarding agenda item 4B?
The images of the buildings that were sent out this evening?
Yes.
What are we, what's our takeaway on that?
Well, our plan is a little unique, that we're going to not only, you know, subdivide and develop the tract or the property, but we're also going to construct all of the buildings. And what we are catering to is a huge need in the marketplace for owner-occupied office space, office warehouse space. They will be designed and finished out with similar designs is what was sent out to you folks. And we have other locations that we've done this in. And it's extremely successful. And a lot of our clients are doing unique, very high-end finish out. So I think it'll be a huge plus for the city because you are going to have a unique project that I don't know of any other location that will do what we're doing.
So I have a question for the city staff. So use is in this particular case, you know, we're looking at, in this particular case, office type pictures. But would it be possible that somebody starts doing local retail activity on this land and then that becomes a permitted use based on the fact that it's in ETJ? Or they open a bar or a restaurant, being that it's in the ETJ? Would that be a, would that be a use that would be permitted based on it being ETJ?
To answer that, because he has an HOA that will be overlay this area, and he'll have restrictions as to their main use of these facilities. their main use of these facilities. Mr. John Barker, did you address that?
Yes, yes, of course. Um, since, since we're going to have a deferred annexation, um, of, of what we're proposing is five years. We are going to heavily deed restrict the property, uh, like we've done some of our previous residential communities and middle architectural committees, things of that nature, uh, which will consist of, of me and my staff. And so, uh, and all this is being created right now, but we'll have heavy restrictions on, um, you know, no outside storage or parking and we have to be behind the fenced area. Uh, also the, the designs of the structures. Um, we're, we're looking at this as, as something that, um, that we're going to make a statement and bring something to the market that's unique. Uh, we aren't going to put down a bunch of warehouses that are leased out that, that, that become, um, not very appealing. So those deed restrictions, those covenants and restrictions will all be put together. Uh, I've been working with the mayor on, you know, just talking through concepts and different things and, and I think we're on the same page, so that would be finalized, uh, prior to the final plat being approved.
And, and those deed restrictions would be the uses, not only the development types that occur, you know, physical structures, but the type of business that would be operated on them as well, or would, or is that an area that you haven't considered including in that document?
Yeah, we could, we could look at, you know, having control over what goes there and what structures are built. Um, you know, when it comes to the type of use. Um. You know, I would want to hear the cities or the councils, uh, viewpoint that if you didn't want retail or restaurants or bars or what have you, I don't know who, what, what the concerns are. Um, but we could address those and, you know, take a look at it. Um, it, it becomes a little tough on the commercial end of telling someone what, what they can and can't do inside, you know, their own building. Uh, but, but we could sure, you know, make sure that, you know, there's not a, uh, trucking companies or tow truck areas and stuff, you know, project, you know, buildings or businesses like that. But. If there's any concerns, I would, I'd like to.
Sitting on top of. Our other things, so.
And the developer.
Alright. Mayor, you're, you're cutting out a little bit, if you said something, if you could repeat yourself, please.
Yes, I said that that could be built in, into the developer's agreement.
Correct.
Would not have bars and such in, in these facilities.
Agreed.
Are there any considerations, like maybe in the development agreement? Traffic? Has there been any consideration traffic that is? How much traffic is going to add to Blue Mountain Road, which is already a bone of contention with a lot of folks?
There definitely. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There definitely will be more traffic. However, Blue Mountain Road is going to be reconstructed into a different facility than it is today. And hopefully that will carry the traffic that's going to be generated.
Okay, speaking of the reconstruct, so. I guess Mike, are you still on? Mike Anderson?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sweetgrass picked up on the west end where, uh, the existing improvements that have been completed and then moved east to the east end of Sweetgrass, correct? That the two lanes, I guess. Um, and then th- these guys are in front of that, they're, they're within the frontage road of Sweetgrass, that where it is. Trying to.
Yes, sir. Yes, generally, yes, sir. Um, so, so Sweetgrass in, in lieu of constructing, um, two lanes through, through their subdivision, um, they put those funds into an account that can be used uh, for the project that, um, is currently being developed at a schematic level by our office at this point. Um, and the limits of that proposed project go from FM one fifty-six on the west um, out through Harmon Road on the east, so we're, we've got, um, sixty percent schematic plans that, um, basically just got printed this week. And we are working to, um, set up some, uh, staff meetings over the next month or so to sort out the different, uh, options as far as the, uh, cross-section for that roadway. Um, doing our best to, uh, try to accommodate everything that's being constructed and proposed through there. Uh, within a, uh, three-lane, uh, undivided roadway section, uh, just due to the access, access requirements and driveways and such, so. Um, what we're, what we're doing is we're, we're trying to lay all this out as far as, uh, what's, what's been improved so far, the stuff you alluded to, to the west there. Um, as well as, uh, the right of way that's been dedicated um, for Sweetgrass and these two developments. And then develop a budget, uh, for the project and figure out, um, a path forward to, to get Blue Mountain reconstructed from A to B, so it's going to be an iterative process because we've got, uh, roughly three miles of road and we've got, uh, roughly, um, I'm not quite sure on the right of way parcels at this point, we've got uh, right of way in, in spots where we need it and we've got like the, the spot on the hill there as we come out of the new development into Sweetgrass, we've got a major grade change through there and we don't have the necessary right of way on the south side of that road, so. We've, we've got enough information developed at this point to, uh, put together a budget and work with the city to discuss different intersection treatments and taking into account these new projects, uh, set the budget and, uh, figure out the right of way needs for the project, that's really where we're at right now on the Blue Mountain Road project, so. We expect to have some working meetings, um, scheduled in the next few weeks. And, you know, that, that process will probably take a month or so before we can get everything lined out and figure out a path forward on the project.
What I'd like to add with regard to Blue Mountain Road, we have so many different, uh, um, companies on Blue Mountain Road doing developments. Instead of each one, um, feeling a piece and it looked like patchwork and what it does when it's finished, that they contribute to this fund, uh, and the city built it all. So it looks, it'll be a very nice road.
So we have an, a construction cost estimate from preliminary one from one fifty-six to Harmon.
We don't have that yet. But that's not to be considered part of this plat, this is outside of discussion on this item.
Obviously, yeah. Alright, so the, the hundred and seven thousand, that's just, that's just based on Sweetgrass estimate of their port.
I, I'll make a note that, that, uh, those estimates are, uh, based on a four-lane divided roadway and that's not the intent of Blue Mountain Road. So there's more, you know, there is, and which all the developers, we've had going back for four or five months. We started, there was so much activity on Blue Mountain Road. But I thought it advantageous if we started a developers coordination meeting. And we did, where all the developers participated in this meeting and engineering and planning. All of us, so everybody could communicate and we're all on the same page, because what one developer does could affect another. And we want them all communicating and that's worked very well.
And just from my understanding, the road that's being developed inside this property, is, is that going to be a public road or is that a private road?
At this point, the roadway is proposed to be a public road, um, dedicated within sixty feet of right of way. And what we're currently proposing is to lay the twelve-inch water line, um, that's necessary for this development and to serve Mr. Gaddy's property within the, um, eastern portion of said right of way for what they're calling this the ridge way, so it would be a, a public, uh, roadway, thirty-foot wide concrete roadway, uh, proposed as a, a bared ditched, uh, roadway section.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant or city staff? Is there a motion?
Greg? This is Dennis. Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I, I have a question, the first drawing of the plat shows a turnaround at the end and the, the last sheet shows a turnaround in the middle also, which one of those are correct?
What the, what the applicant's done is, um, they've included a, a mid, a mid-block, um, turnaround area because of the, uh, block lengths, so, um, if you go to, I think it was the last sheet there. There you go, so you can see the, um, the mid-block turnaround, uh, because they've got that, that piece of property is, it exceeds your block length requirement, your ordinance states that if you've got a block length that, um, exceeds thirteen hundred and ten feet, uh, that's not interrupted by another street. Or you have a, a street that doesn't have a, that is a dead end that exceeds eight hundred feet. Um, we have to figure out a way to deal with that, and so what we, what we did in conjunction with working with the fire department is in order to satisfy that, we, we got them to include that mid-block turnaround. Sometimes.
That, that is the correct one, okay, that, that answers my question, thank you.
You'll see that done sometimes with a hammerhead, but in this case, they felt like that was a little more appropriate, so that that kind of got us out of the, the block length issue and the, and the dead end street issue that satisfied the, the fire department, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Not there, is there a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion for approving preliminary plat for lots one three seven, block A, lots one through four, block B. Mister Ridge Commercial located at eight fifty Blue Mountain Road East.
There's a motion to recommend approval, is there a second? Motion been seconded by Mr. Wallach, all in favor in the room, go hand. Everybody in the room is unanimous, Mr. Hillborn? If you could respond.
Yes.
And Mr. Flaxbark, since you're on the line as well? Alright, motion passes unanimously, moving on. Agenda item five isn't necessary since we're not going into executive session or is six. In agenda item seven, in your packet was a, a report on current development projects that are underway. Uh, we aren't going to go through those in detail, um, if you have any questions upon your review, then feel free to reach out to the city staff and you can ask those questions. And our future agenda. Anything that, uh, we need to be aware of or thinking about for our January regular meeting? At this time? And our meeting is still scheduled for January. I don't have the calendar in front of me. Our next regular meeting is. Do you have the date for our next regular meeting? I'm worried to make that, okay. Okay, and is there any reason we would want to change our meeting schedule that is currently the last Tuesday of the month? And we have the C I C meeting in May and November. We start those meetings fifteen minutes late later, the C I C starting at six thirty. We'll have to confirm the holiday schedule for November and December. Okay, and that's been coordinated with the city council meetings and everything else? Alright. Alright, does anybody have any questions regarding the, uh, the proposed calendar for twenty twenty-two? Okay, is there a motion to accept the recommended schedule?
Paul Wallach. Accept the recommended schedule twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor? Let's go hands in the room and motion passes unanimously. We're adjourned, the time is seven fifteen PM.